Good. You did. Turn to them. All right, we are going to call for July first, 2024 zoning board of appeals for Donald Pritchett to order. First, we'll start with rule call. I'm present, Nick Cannon.
Here.
You have a click?
Yes.
Well, plenty.
Present.
All right, as we noted earlier, Marvin Nash is absent today. All right, if everybody has had a chance to review the agenda that we have. Any issues regarding that? Otherwise, everybody in favor of approving that say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next will be the approval of minutes. First is our August seventeenth, 2023 meeting minutes. And next will be the actual resolution that resulted from that meeting.
August seventh? August seventh, not seventeen.
Okay.
It's August seventeenth, let's say it's the seventh.
Oh, you said seventh.
Okay.
Okay, yep.
I'm mishearing, sorry.
Now, something happened on the seventeenth we should know about, feel free to let us know in the office.
No, we're good. Yep.
But it's been a little while since we needed it.
Yeah.
Whereas it's been almost a year, so.
Yeah.
All right, any motion in favor of accepting those?
I'd like a motion to accept the meeting minutes for seventeen thousand twenty-three.
And I'll approve. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any corrections that any members should we should do? Otherwise, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries and those minutes are approved. Next would be the ZB A resolution twenty-three zero seven, which also was a result from that. Do we have that in our packet specifically? Let's see that. You see the minutes, I didn't see. That's it. Can you see?
Nothing's right here.
The screen, those are the minutes. Oh, I moved too fast. All right. It's staying track, it's right there. Is there a motion in favor of accepting those?
I will make a motion to accept.
What?
And a second?
Second.
Any comments or concerns regarding those? All right, all those in favor of approving the ZB A resolution twenty-three zero seven? Now that I'm looking at the right page. Any people saying aye?
Aye.
All right, all right. Thank you, that is done and approved. All right, now we're going to move on to bills for public hearing. And we have one request before us. I just want to take a moment and thank Stephen. I know this was probably the most difficult packet you've ever put together with everything going on, the power and everything else, so. I think a lot of us looked at the electronic version first and then came and picked it up, but thanks for giving that out to us when we were able to. So, all right, we have a request by Wendy Justo. This is in regards to vacant land at North Roberts Road. Parcel number six-one dash zero seven three-three dash four-zero-zero zero-zero zero-six dash thirty. And this is essentially a dimensional variance. All right, Ms. Justo, are you present here? If you want to come forward to the podium and just explain to us what your request is, what you're asking for, et cetera.
I don't have much.
I'll slide that back.
Yeah, feel free to put it where were you. We're never quite sure how this is gonna look here.
Yeah, well, I'm requesting that the pitch variant go to the three-twelve. Because there is a house that our children would like to purchase that's already been built. And due to everything that's been going on with interest and everything, that's really the only one that they can afford. But it is a beautiful house. And it meets all the requirements of HUD and it's very strict inside. It's got sheet rock, it's got, it's very well-built. And this was not an easy thing for us to help them with because just a few years ago, they could have gotten something, you know, a little bit more expensive or whatever. But this house, I was really impressed with the regulations and how they've built these manufactured homes now. There, I mean, this is, this is gonna be a place, they're gonna be there forever. It's not something they're gonna stay and leave. I mean, we got a partial of the property on the other side. And we actually. But it's just, it's gonna stay in the family forever. So, we don't want them to get something that's gonna depreciate or have problems. And we have, we have confidence that it's going to be, be an awesome house.
So, this is property that you own?
Sorry, I'm nervous.
That's all right, we're trying to be as informal as possible.
I've never done this before and it's just like the media court.
We're not gonna go that far, but. Essentially, what we'll do is we're gonna, we're gonna have a little bit of just like question and answer. We may have some board members that have some questions and we'll go through from there. Don't worry if you stumble over a word or a sentence. I mean, you heard me not understand what the notes were here, right? So, just relax and we're, we'll get through it. But we will start asking some questions, but if you're gonna answer to the best of your ability, or if you don't understand the question, let us know and we'll, we'll rephrase that from there, so. A couple of deep breaths, relax, it's gonna be, it's gonna be fine. It's calmed down a lot in the last few years, it's not attacked anybody.
Oh, Madison is wonderful.
So, so, yeah, just relax, just relax. But as I was saying, so you own the entire parcel of property, your house is there and then you would be placing this?
We don't have a home there. It's a, right now, we're paying at my parents' because my dad's ninety-four and he thinks he can still get up on the roof and show the snow. So, we gotta kind of watch him, you know? But eventually, we would like to build, like, since we live in the city and there's no yard and they have baby and now she's got her second and she's got, she cleans houses and she's saving all this money for down payment and like, oh my God, how this goes through, but, um, yeah, this would be something that we would help them with. We would just give them the part of the unit, because I don't know how the people, kids can do it nowadays, I really don't. Without seeing us now.
Right.
So, parcel B is the parcel that it's looking to go on?
Yes.
The remainder parcel is your parcel.
Yeah.
Do you know what the construction material is and the work for that? That's responsible, you should go.
Yeah, James.
Thank you.
The picture in the, the picture there is that the home? That is the one that you're?
Yeah, yep, I do have, if you would like to, with help, I have pictures. I know you don't need the interior, you have.
Your stuff is essentially a lot model that fits the kids' budget.
And we've got all the upgrades already. And the prices of these things are, oh, well, we had a couple of years ago, which I wish I could have did it then.
My wife and I are first home after living in an apartment, once we got a lot model. That's why I was saying, when I looked at it, we went and saw the one we wanted to get and they sold it. Then they offered us the one right next to it, which is the one my wife wanted. The one I wanted, of course, that's a whole other story, but it's, it's a great way to get into a home, very, very, it's a much more.
All right, Ms. Justo, um, talk to me a little bit about the land that you'd be putting this property for, this house. What, is there anything unique about it? Is its photography any different? Is it just flat? Is it, what, just kind of explain to us a little bit what that would look like.
Yeah, we did some aerial shots. It is all wooded and, um, and it is very private from the, from any, like, the home, there's a home right there, but, um.
I, I heard those photos, we'd like me to kind of explain them to you a little bit?
Yeah, what? Can we see them?
I can show you.
Yeah, why don't you just show us first and certainly.
He explained it to his. All right, so.
Are you also the corner of the?
No, he's, he's my.
His, his help.
He's my support, so I get through this. You know, that one stresses too much.
As I say, we're not trying to stress the hours, we're gonna keep walking.
So. Okay, right. So, the house, we're, um, the only house in the whole area that would even be shown, this is shown where the house is. The property for the building is on this side. And so, it would be.
Just a product of it.
I'm gonna show it.
Yep, one more.
While I'm doing it.
Yeah, there it is. Yes, so, so I'm piecing it together here, um, like that. Basically, the home is here and the house that's gonna be built is way here.
And then, I thought that's what it was gonna be, when I went back there and took photos, that's where I thought the house was gonna go at. It was just perfect.
Yeah, and from the, from the top view, um, from the top view is right here, standing right here, and the road is right here that goes in, which will all, of course, be.
This would be the usement that comes from here.
Yep, yep, right through here, yep. Actually, I had thought of the road a while ago, what I thought was, because there would be no, without neighborhood, with it all. The top's in the top view.
Yeah, so we're.
But like, just from standing and stuff and looking at it too, so, I mean, there's, it's very private and then that's, if it wouldn't have been private, I know my daughter would not have even wanted to build because she's got a yard right now in the city. She's on a corner and people drive slower, maybe slow there. She's, she's got the baby, this is, she's just. She's grown up there for well, eight, nine years and the pond and the fish and the dog. Can't give them garden.
There is a pond up front here?
Yeah, yep, and the, the property line is dispensing, it's pretty tall. And so, all of this right here is the other lot and then, um, here might would be this side right here, which would be all on this side right here. Yep, we'll probably just.
So, this is parcel A up here? This is B, that's what we see.
Yep, which is not so much out there, because it's not needed. This is aerial view, this is the aerial view too, so it would show, it gets very wooded and very private. You know, I knew, there was all the stuff I was gonna tell you guys and I'm like, just from the heart and now, of course, I'm just, I'm just, I don't know what to say.
It's okay, it's not so bad. The, the property line is here. To make this parcel that can run along there. I'm trying to see where the, the pond is.
Yeah, yep, it'll run, um, this, this whole area.
So, if this were the, the parcel now, where is that? Falls, catch falls.
Yep, no, it's all here, it's not on this at all, yep. It's not on there, it's not on there at all, it's just the one point seven-two or whatever. It's all here.
Just this here.
Yep, and then the, the road would be right, right here, which would be, if you.
Thank you.
That was a connection, thank you.
Did you record that? There's a recording here.
So, I know what it looks like. You know, my, my biggest thing is a roof pitch, that's what it's all about, is a roof pitch.
Well, and I think that's were the more difficult question from us for dimensional comparisons. And that's why we're trying to look at what property you have, et cetera. And feel free if you'd rather stand back a little or if you'd rather, you know, whatever makes you more comfortable. Because one of the things for dimensional variances, we look at, is there something unique about the property that would require us to deviate from what the law is, you know, what the, what the ordinances are? And for dimensional variances, that we're somewhat limited to some of that. So, that's why we're asking a lot of these questions about what does this property look like, what is involved, et cetera. Because our, we have a planning commission who sets what the rules are, we have the board who agrees that the rules are that. Our job is to figure out, is there an exception from rules, right? Because that's what you're asking for, it's a variance. Is there a, is there a reason why the rule should apply to you? And is it unique enough where we don't change the rule accidentally? So, that's kind of, as our, as our planning member said, and I think I've said that, you know? Where we just, is this a unique enough exception or not? And, and a, a, an easy example might be your building on vacant land and you've got a setback issue, but you've also got a creek that runs through and because of that, you need an extra couple of feet off the variance. Well, that's unique, right?
Right.
Because you have that. Your property is different, so if somebody comes to us tomorrow and says, I want to do exactly what they did, we'll say, the creek's gotta be in the exact same spot and your property's gotta be in the exact same spot, because that's where your exception came from, that's where, you said, you have a unique enough situation that we should make the rule apply to.
Sure.
So, that's what we're trying to figure out and the questions that we have to figure out is, when you talk about roof pitch, it can be tricky because why, other than cost? Which is not signi-, which is significant, but not an issue nobody else also might have. And I think that's, at least in my mind, as I read this, I want to have that conversation, what makes this different? Where we don't say every modular home will ever needs the same pitch that the planning commission and the board has told us it does. So, that's the question that we have. And any help you have with that, and that's, as I say, why we're trying to kind of walk through a little bit on, on what's unique about this parcel going forward.
Well, first of all, if people don't like the spec that it's pitched a little lower, they wouldn't be able to see it. Secondly, if you want to exclude cost, then that's probably for me the main reason, which they probably wouldn't be able to build, because with having it on the lot and having all the upgrades, considering that they do electric furnaces right now, which they've even admitted at the manufacturing place, nobody ever buys them. It's just so that they can charge an extra twelve thousand. And it would be out of the price range. Other than that, it's, I would like to know, add a question, is there a reason why the township has the pitch where they haven't? That's my question.
It's a great question.
Yeah, I'd like to know that myself.
Because it's very, this was very stressful. So, I still.
I just want you to feel, and Dave's gonna answer that question in a second. I just wanna.
Yeah.
I want it to be very transparent to you what our question is, right? That's, that's what we as a board have to kind of play and figure out. So, I don't want you to feel like if you say a word differently, it's gonna change everything. Question us, what makes this unique and different?
Okay.
And if Dave wants to answer that question or has a answer, otherwise we can turn to her.
We have, we have building codes that are made to keep everybody safe. And it's generally to keep them conformity, to make, it's basically just the rules in which we, we apply to any home that would be built and moving forward. Sometimes properties are grandfathered in that we change a variance and they stay on that, but we have the new variance moving forward, it kind of goes with that. The four-twelve pitch has been in there for, I think, my entire time that I've been on a planning commission, which has been about eight years. I can't give you an answer as to the difference between three-twelve and four-twelve, that's not mine, I'm not a builder. I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you a spin, probably, that I will. We have looked at, we have a housing crisis for young families, old families, anyone looking to build, anyone in that area. We've seen property costs go up. We've now seen the cost for a home, a piece of property go from two-hundred-and-eighty dollars a square foot to build to three-hundred-and-fifty dollars a square foot. We are looking at doing things in the planning commission from that side where we, we've reduced the minimum size for that reason. So, to me, I've asked Stephen, I don't know if I can discuss this at this point, something I would like to do is address that, what is the difference out of three-twelve versus four-twelve? The reason I saw it is I drove out there, I went down North Roberts, there's one existing modular home out there. When you drive down river, there's two more. You turn down the strand, there's, I couldn't tell on a couple of them, so, so to see it as a, I'm not sure it applies as to why this particular home has that, but we do have variances that exist already near them. I hope that answers a question, at least gives you kind of where my head is on it. I've asked at the next planning commission meeting, we can discuss the three-twelve, four-twelve, because what is the difference? Maybe, maybe there's a reason beyond my understanding, but I understand what it is for slope and.
My uneducated guess was that it was stonebumps.
And.
Stonebumps. But I don't have an engineering.
That would be my, my question.
My suspicion is maybe snow load, but more than likely it's aesthetics.
I don't see a variation, why were it variance, when you gave the, was it two and a half feet or something, or it was a, or inches, I can't remember what you had in there as far as what you said, it was just a nominal?
Yeah, it's a nominal three-twelve, the instruction drawings or the U F N say it could be as little as two and a quarter over twelve.
So, stretch this out. So, then, then you go into, this is why we get, you get big, big ones. See, what I do, I, I, to me, this is where my head is. My head is, we need to be able to provide answers and I don't have an answer as to why three-twelve, four-twelve, what would be the difference? And, and it was, we went through this and several other things in the planning commission and our, we go to the codes, two buildings, said two accessory buildings, why two? Two is arbitrary enough and we had to go through that. You guys went through that with some of the lot size, there's a lot coverage and things that.
That's why we have a lake, a new lake district.
And, you know, some of this, this might be the, I won't say the tipping point, but for me, when I read that, we just reviewed, we did some of the things on the lot size, why didn't we not look at that? You give somebody an opportunity to do something like they're doing, where you could build on property using something that exists that puts someone in, gives them the opportunity to be a homeowner in the area. Honestly, I, I just, that was my heart, that was like, that, you know, to me, I'm going, this, this is kind of crazy, because I know if you look at properties that, what we built our house for twenty-four years ago, I feel almost, I won't say Rockefeller-ish, but you see the value of that, that to be in the position I would have had twenty-four years ago, it puts me in a world where I'd be in the position of going, I don't know if I could really do what I did now, so, that, that's where my head is. This is not like, it's a.
I have a daughter, maybe in my basement, buried for a while. I, I, I understand this.
So, that's my thing, my, my thing is I like to follow the rules, I like to do all the things that are, are there and for that one, that one dimensional variance question. And like I said, I'm, I'm one vote, I'm not one to say, but I mean, to me, it's, it's seems to me that this would be something that we could ask someone why, what is, what is the cause and effect on that if we say yes or we say no? Are we really?
And, and I agree with all that logic. I don't know what we have here to grant the variance, other than it should be changed. Because dimensionally, property-wise.
I agree, I, I, this is why I was.
And, and, and we've had some planning commission and some board members occasionally express their angst at us for.
Well, I'm frustrated with their situation.
Trying to make a point.
This is one of those things, you know, usually, this would be where I would be away a bit. And you would be going, well, why can't we? So, I started there and that's my first thing, I, you look at my notes as I was writing this down, that's what I'm writing down. We're trying to make it easier, at the same time, it's there and I don't know what we can do at this point. Is, is there any, Nick is usually a very creative gentleman.
He's been, put the pressure on him a little bit, but he's.
I'm just one vote, that's why I said, I, I don't know where everyone.
We're redoing it.
Can you make a couple more?
Comments to us or describe? You had mentioned, I think, in your application, that it was very difficult to find a pitch that would match. How much did you search for that? Was it that hard or is it just a cost difference? Were you able to find some options that fit?
Not unless it's quite a few thousand over what they can do and for us, help them as much as we're going to help them. That's, yeah, I would have rather just not be here right now.
I'm gonna hook on the album that. On Saturday, I took about an hour and I did some searching for larger homes and trying to see what, how big of a deal is it to get a four-twelve? Standard is three-twelve across the board. You go to the, you go give one, it's three-twelve, three-twelve, three-twelve. Sounds like special order, you can get a four-twelve or you could even get a five-twelve, but they have to have a hinge above to get a five-twelve. Four-twelve is a special. So, I totally get this idea of to get one, it's a bigger ordeal, you can't just go. So, is there a hardship there?
Yeah.
If you're in a bind and trying to get a home, put on a lot quickly to help a family out, it might be a hardship inside of that, which is one of our questions that we have to consider. I'll tell you, from my sisters looking at selling their home and moving into one, they have to order and it is a year out right now for the actual delivery for a four.
Or just order.
Just, just to order a home. Now, if you say you want a four-twelve or a five-twelve, you're going to the back of the line, because they just got everything set.
So, maybe that has something to do with shipping? Or.
I would think.
Where that keeps a.
Yeah, that's why the five-twelve has to go into a hinged, so they can lower that down, travel.
They don't need a five, they don't even do four, because they acquired.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, in that, there is a practical difficulty of time and the ability to order and to get delivery in a reasonable amount of time. Based on what I discovered and what I've heard. So, having heard some of them, is it, is there any reason you could think that that might apply in your particular situation?
Oh, yeah, definitely, since completely. And the hardship too of wanting to move them quickly because the neighborhood there.
You mentioned they've been looking for a little while, that they've been.
Even looking to purchase just something anywhere and.
This is a lot home that you were taking because you can't get the one. So, I mean, that's, that's all, to me, plays to that answer of. Availability of, of home and then the search. I give a little defense to mobile and manufacturing modulars.
Finally, hold on just a minute, we're gonna, we're gonna switch to public comment and on your turn, you're very welcome to do that. If your name was anywhere out here, anybody shoot, I don't know. Hot seat, so to speak, but hopefully we're surviving through it. Okay.
So. Any other questions for Africa right now, or should we? Any other questions for Africa right now, or should we?
Take her out the hot seat.
Take her out the hot seat.
Okay. If you'd like to sit back down, we may still have some questions for you as, as we're talking.
So leave all this stuff because I printed up so they're. They actually going up and not down and you know that they're worth, these, their houses are worth a lot more. Because I want to put our daughter in a, in a house, it's, it's gonna be for her forever.
Yeah, we're free, have a seat. We're not, we don't want you to think you can't add something if we have another question or anything like that. So. All right, should we switch over to the public comments? See if we have any public comment and then we'll be able to kind of open up from there. So. Okay, if we have anybody in the public who'd like to make a comment on that, you're certainly welcome to. We do want you to come to the podium and just give your name, address, et cetera. And I know we have a couple of.
My name is Rodney Smith. I'm Wendy's fiance. We've been together for quite some time and as far as my defense of the manufactured modular homes, if you look at the history of such buildings. Roofstone collapse. The live loads, they're, they're designed to carry the live, the live loads in whatever region they're designed to be sold in. So that's not an issue. I think the only issue is that sometimes they're not properly maintained. And repaired as necessary and you get some water intrusion and that's where you get the stereotypical crappy trailer house. You know, but as far as the structure itself is perfectly solid, whether it's in a manufactured home community or in a rural setting.
Yeah, I don't think our issue is the modular manufactured home discussion.
No, that was somebody's email that mentioned that.
For property business. It is more of the pitch.
And whether it's a mobile home or manufactured home, modular, if it's placed onto a foundation, it's accessible as a real property anyway. So that kind of takes that right out of the equation. The value of the house might not be as valuable as a twenty-five year square foot. Different house, but. If it's placed there at that value, it should only go up, as far as speaking, real property, it's value. I guess that's my defense for that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
In, in the public, why not? All right, and I will close the public comment and switch over to the board discussion. As I say, we're gonna talk a little bit. We may have some questions for you. It feels such a while it's gone up here. As I said, we're trying to be, you know, somewhat informal here going forward, but. Stephen, the, the first question I have, and I don't know if you would know this or if there's any way. Do we know what any of the pitches are on those other homes in the area that are modular?
I do not. I'm not sure when.
And I don't.
That specific rule was put in, it might have been in seven, when this version of the ordinance was adopted and they could all be grandfathered in.
Right. Well, I don't think I would ever trust my eye to do a two inch difference from the road.
You know, it could be a four twelve that just looks really.
Yeah. Do you recall how many modular homes have even been put in in downtown Chicago the last thirty-five years?
There've been a couple. And there's a few from Fremont homes that look like just regular ranch homes. Most of the modulars are along that style where they're analyzed construction and brought in in pieces.
But manufactured home versus a modular home, I think is the.
Yeah, but they're more manufactured versus modular.
Well, this would be modular and something you have two. Pieces.
Yeah.
I always thought modular was the two pieces that got put together where manufactured could have six pieces.
Yeah.
Look at all the, I'm sad.
It really doesn't define modular versus manufactured. It just, it regulates more dimensional.
You know, they've talked about like manufactured walls, you know, I'm gonna bring in walls where really it's built after that, but the walls themselves are considered not stick built and they're like spent all the time, you don't. Mic or word or something to that effect, so. Did you have a?
I can add a little bit to the information as far as the disparity or the difference between modular home.
An actual definition?
Maybe not. Let us know, but I know.
Well, you're finding you can Google over here, so I don't know what's.
Manufactured home is the mobile home of the past.
Right.
And a modular home is where it's built, the whole pieces are built off site. They come to the site and are put together at the site.
So we're not supposed to use manufactured anymore? It's all modular?
Manufactured, not mope.
Right.
They're manufactured. Not modular.
Modular.
Yeah, mobile would still be.
Yeah. Modular is like the kid car.
Yeah.
Modular is built factory modules.
Yep.
And walls specifically through modules that are brought out, trailers put together, you can go in store.
Yeah.
I still think you can get manufactured walls, but they're on site. It's not a full construction. Do you recall much conversation from the board on this issue?
There was no conversation on the board, other than I'm like, I want, I want to change that rule is what I want to do. I'm like, I don't like it. I don't like the governmental control over things like this. It's like, America needs to be free again. Just needs to be free. That's the trustee part of me. Yeah.
Well, you're consistent. You're consistent with that.
I'm very consistent.
You don't have any rules you'd like.
Nope.
The issue though, I think, and I, and I joke about that, but. The issue I have is that the Z D A's place to make that change.
I know.
Because absolutely the trustees can do that. Absolutely the planning commission can do that. What I'm struggling with is at our spot.
What I struggle with is.
To, to do that.
Why is it even an ordinance in the first place? Why is that, that roof pitch a thing where these people have to pay six hundred bucks to come in here? And say, please, can we get this? Because that's all that's available unless you gotta wait a whole year to get.
And my guess is that the snow load at one point, when somebody said, we gotta, gotta have a baseline because we can't have a flat roof here. Even though we have plenty of businesses who do, right? But not, not many residential. That was the line they drew.
Yeah.
And if you're far back, people were concerned about the ability to have the strength without a little pitch where. I think now buildings probably are better.
Again, there's no, they're all built by standards that meet snow load, flag load.
Right, yeah, we, we, we understand.
Any different in a manufactured home community.
But. Reality is, because we have an ordinance in place here, we've got to figure out if there's enough exception for the Z V A to do something about this versus the planning board.
So if we look at our four questions.
Which.
Ultimately, I can answer. Considering availability, delivery. I look at that idea of practical discussions. And I think I, I think I can say yes to that based on those items, having to order four twelve or a five twelve. The timeliness of getting that. Or two is applicable, right?
No, I don't think.
Three, depriving the property owner's right to enjoy their property and use it as a residential space. So one is the hardest one to answer, Nick.
Yeah, because I sort of agree. I don't think this is gonna be a detriment. To other neighboring parcels, you know, D or four here. I, I, I think that's an easier one. I do struggle with A, is if we read up, if an applicant seeks a dimensional variance. Dimensional characteristics of the lot or parcel of land are because of exceptional topography or similar conditions of land buildings or structures. I don't see any of that here. Is there a policy that probably needs to be updated? Is there an emergency out to get some new housing? Might be an argument for that. I don't know if we could make that.
Yeah, it's almost like that first sentence there or the first paragraph there is written in a way of thinking about just the land size, not necessarily the building code or the standard of the structure going on.
Can I come in and build a stick house? With the same. Versus unique modulars? I don't think the ordinance is unique to modulars. But I think we have a companion one for, for stick. As well.
Stick is not an option, but you could build that in. That would be part of your cost. To, to say you need to go four twelve or five twelve, that would be, you could, you, you couldn't argue it because you're bringing in, you're bringing in the trusses. In which you could do that when you're dealing with. A home and you're looking to do that on the property and it comes in three twelve and that's the predominant. That is the, does it fit? Or this is why I said, it's a way of saying it doesn't fit our ordinance. But the, the practical is the fact that they don't make them enough to say you can't. And it's, it's a two inch dimensional variance, but again, it is a variance. Hardship? That's, that's harder to, to fall on hardship, but as far as availability and, and housing and every. That's our question. And that's why I say to, to. To approach it from that, if we went exclusively by this. And it's, it doesn't comply as it doesn't have a, but again, saying that we don't have a hardship, is that hardship there? I mean, that's, that's where we have to practical. Define practical. And that's where I, I don't.
We're dealing with what? You could build anything on it.
Yes, yes.
There's nothing unique about the lot.
Yeah.
The desire to build and bring in something specific, it is unique.
Stephen, is this considered a dimensional variance or a variance?
Dimensional.
Really, our only other option is use. We don't see too much of that. Like we don't have a third one lying around somewhere we've never run into before. It's a tough, and I think because there's nothing unique here. Are we okay with changing? Because we're, we're changing the ordinance though. Because the next one that comes through. And the lot next to me. You can't say, or the lot next to any of us, you can't uphold this to the same pitch. And I don't know if there was anybody else who waited a year and a half to get there to comply with this. That doesn't necessarily make this decision right for us.
I, I hear you.
I'd be happier if the planning commission had this on their next agenda and we could just adjourn it. Back, but.
And we have a process that we have to go through for that and say, you're. It's not as. It's not one unique deal. Because you guys have to decide on it, then it's gotta go to the board for approval, public hearing. Yeah, public hearing and adopting, right? They're looking at a two month process to. Or limited on how long.
It does, it, it does trouble me that we're inadvertently taking out an entire class of. Houses within reason. I'm sure you, I'm sure you could get a six twelve if.
Sure.
You didn't mind a three year wagon or something like that.
We just added tiny houses to some of the planning commission.
We talked about that, yeah, at our.
Container homes. We've addressed a lot of things. This is one of those that its time has come for discussion. It's whether we change it through the zoning Board of Appeals, or do we change it through the planning commission? I sit in both chairs, so I can, like I said, for me.
Well, you have to tell them if we do this, you have to then. Explain why, then you get to tell them, well, I, I don't know about that rogue Z V A again, making, making random decisions even though I voted for it.
I did, like I say, it is a, it is a, because it could be applied then to any portion of that we say, well, this is hindering someone from doing something on their property that.
Is expensive and more difficult.
It can be done. That's.
If, if I want to order a brand new vehicle with a special pink color. I can do it. Might never see it for a year and a half.
Oh, right.
To go through the whole home.
So if.
But I, I do agree. I don't fundamentally like the fact right, right now, we're taking out basically all modular. Reasonable.
Or most, because it wouldn't take them all out. You could do it with a pitch change. Which requires right now in this, like I said, I don't know if, if, if that is a hardship. Is that a hardship that we say that the availability of, of housing being what it is could be, that's what we have available. And if we can't state there's a reason for three, twelve, four twelve, I can't give the answer. That's why I say I'm not a builder. And I, I know what it's in there for, but again, once you make that Pandora's box, then there's our.
But we do know. You're not that long, they sold off the lot. Without. If we trucked it from some random spot out of the bay or something, that just doesn't have one.
And then you're dealing with additional cost of shipping and everything else on that. So anything you say, if you're looking in this area, I'm just, I'm like Nick said, I've, my sister, I've been helping her look for them. That's what.
Yeah.
I don't try to bring personal stuff in, but when you do that, you spend time looking at them and you're saying, hey, here's one, or you find one, it's just like homes right now. You think you got a lead on one and it's so. Or you think you have this. And so this is one of those. It, it hinges on three twelve, four twelve. That's the only thing that this, this sits on. And again, I don't know where we can. As far as dying, going to the, the steps with the planning commission, there's no guarantees that's gonna even be the solution. Because we might have a reason why that doesn't go. But I mean, to me, it makes sense that we would. We discuss it. It's a different discussion. That's changing something and through that process, but to say we can override, say we done it, it used to happen. We did the. As far as lot size, you guys were getting hit with those for a lot of reasons and things on there and we, and it all makes sense when you're hearing the, the individual case.
And those were consistently unique.
Yes, yes.
With the lake front, that frontage, changing some of those. And then we did get an ordinance change, but that wasn't that. And then we did get an ordinance change, but that was another lot of happiness and joy. Trustee and planning commission level when we started doing that.
You know, that bringing back very fine memories. That's why, and that's.
I remember having a couple of planning commission trustees here and a couple of them because they were not sure what we were doing. We would lay it out. Because there was enough, I always felt there was enough uniqueness about those properties that I could distinguish between anybody else who came through. But if you're not jolly those same restrictions, we were going to grant, you know? If we said, we're dealing with all these little small thumbnail lots, maybe you should all get an extra foot or two. And that's what we started to do. And then we started, but you, you had to fit those parameters. And that's what I struggle with this is there aren't any parameters.
We've not had a meeting since last August, which tells us we are on the road to many things that are at least addressing a lot of those concerns. Is this one of those things that needs to go that path? I'm not sure. And that's why, I mean, to be fair, I'm not, I, I got, man, you talk about the devil and the angel on each shoulder right now. I've, I've got this one. Well, I'm, I'm thinking and I'm feeling at the same time.
That's where we get the barbers. We've got three of us who are not otherwise affiliated, right? You know, it's not supposed to be our job to make policy. Well, here's to making assumptions when the particular parcel. But we've made policy before, so I'm not going to stand high versus very long. I just struggle with, I can't say what's unique enough about this or the next one that comes through. We can't rubber, we're not rubber stamping.
If you table. And we go another route and we go through the other door. That is a potential to make the change that makes this not necessary. But we're already here. That's my problem. And so I, I, I mean, to me, to be fair, that's where I'm stuck on. So I'm thinking it's, it's difficult because I, I will have a voice in that, but I can't, in this case, I mean, I am a vote. And I, and I mean, it's very frustrating because I can see where we've had discussions on this, but I can't tell you that to give someone hold and say it's going to, I can't. I mean, that's not.
Well, we don't have to be on the planning commission to appreciate the commission's issue.
You, you sat in that chair.
Yeah, well, that's right.
You understand that. So that, that's the problem is that you want to be fair. This is, you have reasons to be fair to the other people that are going to read that and go four twelve. That's what I have to do. And the ones that say, well, I want to do three twelve, what do you think about that? Now, I'm not the one we'd make them go through to get approval. They'd have to go through four. Here's our situation. Now, just the practical availability to someone in a particular situation where they need to get a home or lots of homes. Does that mean, does that make sense to, at this point, say, yes, I think we should do that? That's, that's where you have, and I have, we're, we're in the same conversation, but we have two different paths there.
But we also don't have the specific facts in front of us to use that as a threshold. Which also troubles me as we start thinking like, if this is an actual emergency to the sense that we should deviate from. We, we have a, it will take longer and be more expensive. True, but not factually accurate.
That went to finance emergency.
Now, if you can actually give me facts to say, we can do this, but it's thirty percent more and your average one costs X, so it's thirty percent more. And it asked three dealers. And here's response time. Yes, we could do this. For two years.
Are you comfortable? I, I don't know this to be fact. We had twelve thousand dollars additionally thrown into that conversation. Is that a hardship or is that just what it costs? That you couldn't do it to this home that they're wanting to buy? And availability, we're getting back, this is where I'm going to chase the circle. We'll be here.
Yep. But it's also for me. It says if the planning commission and the trustees don't decide not to do anything, and we decide this is a practical difficulty slash emergency. Well, the reasons we have decided that are the following specific facts. So if you come back before us, you've got to have the same facts, right? You have to say. I, I mean, I don't know this to be true. Say this is still a COVID inflation issue. Then a year and a half from now. Every lot has half of the four twelves and half of the three twelves. Now, factually, if you come in and you can't demonstrate that it's an emergency and it's, they don't exist, I would then be less likely to grant another one because the facts have changed. But I don't know that to be true. So Stephen, you know what I mean though? I'm just saying like, if you can demonstrate, hey, this is an issue. And then if that issue resolves itself three years down the road, I think this is the reason not to do it anymore. But I don't know if that will happen. Speaking off the top of my, to make this factually a little bit different, but the next one that comes through. Because then you think we're just changing. I don't know if we can approve one and say we're not going to do another one until the planning commission thinks so. And, uh, I don't think the trustees can do that first. I think the planning has to.
I can't speak the entire planning commission. That's where.
And I'm not.
And that's where, and that's where, like, I'm saying that for, for me, I have my thoughts. My problem is I can't, I can't speak to. So I don't feel comfortable saying yes without without exploring the other options first.
I think this is an issue ripe for the planning commission to discuss what they decide.
Right.
You know, we're not, we're not saying anything one way or another, but.
But we give the applicant timeline. If we were to go to that, if we were to have discussion at the next meeting, I'd come to a consensus on this.
Yeah, you're right.
And we were to put it in a public hearing, you're probably what, two months?
Yeah. So if we start with a discussion in July, first draft in August, second draft in September, fourth approval in October. Effective date at the end of October. If we approach the planning, if I approach the planning commission with a draft, a proposed draft, it would be July first draft, August. Public hearing. July, September board, and then end of September.
Because this would be a pretty easy one to bring before the, the planning commission because we would say yea or nay, because it's either reasons for three twelve being okay or four twelve.
Yes.
To make the.
We would essentially be proposing to complete a section of the code.
So it's a, you got, okay.
So it's, it's a pretty straightforward for the planning commission to can say. Yes, we like the proposed draft. No, we don't. So we don't have to waste a month in discussion. It's not like something where we're setting up accessory dwelling in a certain trust. Doesn't need to be discussed.
I don't want to put burden on the zoning board to make decisions that should probably go to the commission. That's where I think I'm at at this point, but we could, would we, would we table this? Or would we need to? Would that be a?
There's where we can do what we want.
I, I know.
Stephen just may not like us.
Do you guys want the skinny on what's going on? Have you been able to follow up?
It doesn't sound good to me though. It just doesn't sound.
I understand everything that you're saying. There isn't anything unique about it except for the cost back, availability of homes.
Yeah.
It's, like I said, it's not unique to the property. That's.
Yeah, and I.
That's an economic issue.
I want to get her out of a bad neighborhood. I'm a mom, so. I mean.
They have another baby out there, so.
But it also puts a spotlight on an issue of something that should probably be.
Here's your topic for your next meeting.
Looked at.
It's an easy one for the planning commission to take, take under. It's this whole book right here. I get on Jeffrey's topic every time. This used to be on a poster. One poster. And we're now with this. So if it's in here, I'm supposed to uphold that.
Sure.
And that's. There's, there's two of me. I'm a dad too. That's why I say I'm, I'm. It's, it's what I'd like to do. Like you think heart and, and heart and brain, we have to go probably at this point, probably fall on the side of what we have in front of us with that, unfortunately. I'd hate to, because I can't make that rational, say it's, it exceeds, none of those other factors are enough to sway this, I don't think, at this point. So if we do that and we bring it before, our next meeting would be the last Tuesday in July.
Yes, July thirtieth.
So it would be our, our preparation and it's a pretty easy one to bring forward. We'd have our discussion. We also have potential change that we could make at that point. Like you said, you're probably looking at. There's not a faster way that you can't rush things like this. I mean, it's not like I'm, we need to rush it, but we, in your case, I don't know how the property sits, but we're not supposed to take that as a contingency on our decisions to say, well, we might lose that home or.
So Stephen, I, go ahead. I thought I heard what you said. I just want to verify. So if it went to planning on the thirtieth, that's that Tuesday, that was Tuesday of July. Would that then go to the next board of trustees meeting or do you need to have a public hearing in the middle of that?
Yes, we'd have to have a public hearing at the August board meeting. Because the ordinance requires that we, in changing the ordinance, we have to have a draft ordinance approved and then schedule a public hearing with the planning commission at the following meeting. And then the following board meeting, the board would approve.
So if the planning commission had a public hearing, August.
Last Tuesday in August.
So it'd have to be a double planning. First you have to discuss it, then you have to vote for it, then you have to have a.
He could bring them, he could bring it to us. This is an easy one. He could write the, the change and we could discuss that and rehab that on July. August is when you'd have to have the public hearing.
That would have to be on the twenty.
And then if we have the public hearing and approve it, you go to the next board meeting for them to agree to it. And then it would be the end of September.
You know, it's the second Monday.
So it'd be this. The second Monday in September.
The ninth.
Yep. And then we're publishing the paper the following Sunday, the notice of adoption. And I believe seven days after that. So two weeks after the ninth would be the effective date. So if it's going through, essentially I could receive all the application materials before the effective date. And then on that date, I'd be able to sign it and send it over to the building inspector.
The twenty third. Twenty third of August. Twenty third is the goal date.
It'd be of September.
I haven't ever crossed something that ran to the fact that in city township and all this room, you want to have a four twelve pitch. I don't put it there. Ordinances.
For either stick or modular.
So.
We don't have a modular manufacturer.
Yes. Oh, that's true. That's, that's where the manufacturer does come in.
And differentiate between modular and stick build.
But we can differentiate manufacturer.
But that's how, also in a zoning ordinance, we can't prohibit manufacturer modular housing types. But zoning ordinances can regulate things like roof pitch and width.
But we have that same roof pitch requirement for.
For everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can regulate it because it applies to everyone. And my suspicion is that with three twelve being the standard, four twelve was chosen specifically.
I remember that conversation before. If I remember this dialogue as to some of that, that was. It just. There's not another, I don't see another best thing.
I have a question.
Sure, sure.
I don't know where, I just saw it on Google and I didn't want to look at my phone. I want to pay attention to you guys. And I thought it said that the state of Michigan requirements for manufactured home is three twelve. Now. So every township decides of their own little pieces of what they decide on. That's how they work?
Yes. Each township or municipality, because city or something like that has their own ordinance.
Okay.
And they're probably all about seventy five percent similar. The twenty five is where all the. Because if you're in the city, your lots may be much different than here where you may have larger parcels or, or something to that effect, so. What if we table it for sixty days? If the plan, I'm kind of at the point where I don't think this is our business. But I feel if the planning commission also decides it's not their business, then it becomes our business again. Well, I mean, if they elect not to take this up and consider it.
Why would they do that?
Then I think that that puts us back to perhaps a decision that we could.
Forces our hand to make a decision. But we're not supposed to be policy setters. And the thing is, and I think there's, there's enough there to warrant a sixty day. I think that makes sense. I'm very comfortable with that.
And, and perhaps then if we reschedule this, we could have a lot more economic facts that we could then. And I don't want you to misinterpret that because if you brought those today, we're probably at the same spot. So don't, don't go home tonight and go, man, if I had just brought that, would it, because we're still kind of stuck in this. But if, if you can figure out, you know, your average.
What's the difference in the cost of going four twelve or five twelve and ordering a home? Have, have a couple of places that are doing that, that sell the homes that you could bring in. Say we did, it was X here, Y there. Then you have, you have something that builds a stronger case. I think it's, it's a way to do that. Unfortunately, we can't go beyond the three twelve, four twelve dispute at this point. That's where I'm hung up. Like I'm going back, I'm like literally.
End it.
Not that, I know you can usually see what's running around in here, but that's what's in my head right now. I was like, you need to get those two things.
And it wouldn't take much for me to support this economic emergency piece. I, I could run with that a little bit. I think of something unique, but I don't feel we've got the facts that support that yet.
The ratio to manufacture one for you cost is going to be important. If in sixty days we have to come back. If you could have those ready, that would be helpful.
All the ones that we looked at before were out of their budget. That's why we opted for this model, this, this display model. And they're only going to hold it for so long. So I guess.
But, but for us, as cold hearted as it sounds to say, your budget doesn't matter.
I understand.
What matters if you can point to us that if we could get a three twelve, it's this, these are the hardships that happen if we have to go to a four twelve and custom order or this or that. We can do it all. It's twenty five percent more. It's a year and a half down the road. That just gives us some facts then to say. You know, here we are, because we can't.
Can't rewrite that through this. And that's our predicament. The step is rewriting that and, and really throwing it.
Yeah. And budget's tough because you can't come in, you know, want to build a three thousand square foot house. And suddenly you. And suddenly you have to do more than one bedroom and more, or one bathroom and say that's too expensive, right? You know, we just, those are just, we can't quite work with that, what we work with is, okay, these are the delays, this is what would happen, so on and so forth, so.
So then there's really nothing until the next, until you guys put all this to the people that actually had decided to have it as a four twelve and make them, talk to them about switching it. So basically, even if I brought in the information showing that the interest rate is, everything is poor, and the difference between a payment of 800 to 2,000 because of just little things.
But you're, I'll try to say this maybe this way. Your financial situation is not what's unique. What's unique is the market. So if you can demonstrate to us that I can buy a three twelve off the lot and it's going to, on average, it costs a hundred thousand dollars. I can order a four twelve, or I can get one from Reno, Nevada. But if I do that, it's 25 to 30% more for no comparable living increase, right? I mean, that's, that's part of the problem here, is you're not getting more space with your two inches of roof line.
And you're getting less house, you're getting less everything, because you have to upgrade plus fortunes.
And, and if you then also say it takes a year and a half to get that through the pipeline, that's unique to what you're trying to do. That's not your personal financial situation, that's what you're trying to do. If that, does that make more sense?
Yeah, it does.
You know, the good news is, we haven't voted yet, but I think there's some consensus here of tabling in the sense we, we're not saying no.
For how long?
We're, we're trying to keep this to a different group to make a decision. If they refuse or don't make a decision, we might be persuaded to be more aggressive about it.
Yes.
I think that's a fair way of.
You've done your homework on a lot of this, I know the home comes into your availability, you want to make it work. Our thing is, we have to just fit it. We, we have to go through the things here, and I think there's some things at work that without promising, and that's not in our intention, but just going through the steps here, I think there's going to be some dialogue that might see where this might make sense. So we got two things, you got actually two groups working with you now, rather than just one, if we go through planning commission, it goes that route, everything happens, it could be by August 23rd if everything fits the way we want. If not, we could be back here two months, 60 days. And we could be at roughly around the same time.
Wish I could find another home like that, because I know they're not going to keep that one.
And that's unfortunately, yeah.
I know, I'm just talking, I'm speaking out loud here. But it's good that you guys are, you know, doing this for other people that come in this situation too.
We're trying to stay in our lane as much as possible.
I sent, I sent a text to Stephen asking the same question, put this out already after seeing this, because I, I had a feeling in my head this was going to be our result. My heart was going, maybe I can go in and just, I'm keehoeding this thing through and make it.
You guys remind me of, what was that, that show, The Voice or whatever? You know how the three said yes and one no, we said no? I'm sorry.
Somebody's getting about me.
That's what she's talking about. I'm sorry, if I don't laugh, I'm a problem.
See, our, our positions are unique because we have four different people, usually five, that we all come to this with this is not our life's calling, this is just
We live in this township, we, we've built homes, we've moved homes.
And every time this book comes up, it's like, why am I living here?
Because the next town is bigger.
I'm serious.
Just make a motion for
It makes me know to, to look at a township a little bit deeper before I actually move into it.
Motion for, uh, to table for 60 days, ZBA 23 dash oh one.
I support.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any questions or comments regarding that? The only thing I might add to that is if we run into a deadline, I would be open to a email vote if we wanted to extend that for x by 30 days. I don't want to do that now, but
If you say 60 days or 30?
60.
Okay.
I said, but what if we
Okay.
What if we need 90 or something? I, I would be open to a email vote from the members on that, rather than having to pay for another meeting.
I think the best thing to do is say at least 60 days.
All right, I'll redo that. I make a motion to table for at least 60 days, ZBA 23 dash oh one.
I support. All right, any questions or comments regarding that amended motion?
No.
All those in agreement, indicate what you're saying, aye?
Aye.
And the opposed? All right, that motion carries then to table that for at least 60 days. Okay. All right, then we'll move on to communications. Communications. Of business. Business. Any public comments on a non-agenda item? Seeing nobody rushing up. All right.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all. Let me make sure we give this back to you, so you have this.